Call this meeting to order. Amy, if you'd lead us in the place, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anne, if you'd call the roll, please.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Here.
Mrs. Boring, Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Mayor Leuschleiter.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Mr. Gerber.
Here.
Vice Mayor Saley.
Here.
Great, thank you. It's that time for citizen comments. Appears as though we have three people signed up this evening. Mr. Mauer, you are first on our list. If you'd like to come forward, please.
Your worship, members of council and members of the city staff. About 10 days ago, two people came up to me and said, "Hey, you've made the dispatch." My first reaction was to groan because every time in my tattered and pointless life, when my name has gotten into the papers, I've had to straighten the whole thing out, word by word. The dispatch doesn't know it, but they've got me over a barrel. And the barrel is that I am preparing for two piano concerts and don't have to take, don't have time to take them on at the moment. Actually, of course, I could deny and disavow the whole thing because they bespelled my name. And I ain't the one who was up there according to that name, or was taken into the paper according to that name. But that's just playing around. And also, if I disavowed that, I'd also have to disavow a very heartwarming and brain-warming letter I got from one of you. You gave me a copy of the letter that you sent to the dispatch. I'm not sure whether it'll be published or not, but at any rate, you did a marvelous, for me, depiction of what is I do up here. Modesty forbids me from reading that. If the writer wants to divulge it, he can. So, one thing that did annoy me in the dispatch was somebody wrote in, just one sentence, said, "Mauer doesn't know anything about markets or about marketing," which I found very annoying, particularly since the thing I talk about or have been talking about recently about other festivals, other ethnic festivals in the city would quadruple, quintuple, multiply the market. I remember, I don't know, not all of you were on council one time, a few years ago, when I went to a professional concert, my professional concert at the University of Toronto. And on the way back, driving back, I suddenly saw a sign which said, "To Stratford, Stratford, Ontario," which is where the North American Shakespeare Festival, the Shakespeare Theater is annually. So, I went there, went over there, and I was a couple of minutes late for the performance, which is all right because I ran into the ticket maker. It was a person who had been in the project there from its beginning. And they began way back 30, 40 years earlier with a $150,000 budget. And in the year that I spoke with them, they had a $34 million budget, having parlayed the Stratford, Ontario, which marketed its name the way you market Dublin. But the people of Stratford didn't particularly love Shakespeare necessarily. But that is the kind of thing I, well, should I keep talking about myself? At any rate, I came back and said, "Look, you got a square mile over there where you want to put in a golf course. You could put in there the, that this would be the Western Hemisphere's center for Irish drama." And Bernard Shaw himself would take up most of it. I remember Bernard Shaw said that he was not going to let his plays get into the schools and be hated the way Shakespeare was. But at any rate, the parallel for here seemed to be at that time, good one. But at any rate, the dispatch is getting off for the time being, and I'm leaving, so I'll get off here and I'm going back home to practice, practice, practice. See you later.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Mr. Blackwell?
Good evening. I'm here tonight as a representative of Dublin AM Rotary's Literacy Committee. Rotary throughout the world strives for remote literacy in the belief that a educated society will be more likely to be peaceful and prosperous. And Dublin AM Rotary is doing its part, supporting within the local schools Daniel Wright, with whom we have a special relationship. Daniel Wright is perhaps the most diverse of our schools with 21 languages spoken. It has perhaps the most economic need, and its students have the lowest kindergarten readiness assessments, so they certainly can use some help there, although they do a wonderful job with the students. Every week, Dublin AM Rotary gives the students a book for their library. And last spring, we had a literacy event where the library, the Dublin City Schools, and Dublin AM Rotary partnered to have a reading event. And five of the seven of you came out to that, and thank you so much for doing that. The students still talk about it at Daniel Wright, I'm told, and are very happy about that. The grant that gave that last year has disappeared, unfortunately, but thanks to the generosity of Dublin AM Rotary and the friends that have come so much a part in library, we're going to go ahead and do it again anyway. Uh-oh. So, on April 3rd, which is a Wednesday, at 1:45 PM at Daniel Wright Elementary, we're going to be having this event. Now, I realize you're all very busy and probably can't make it during the day, but I'd like to invite you to come to that event. Much like last year, you'd just be reading a little bit. And the book you'd be reading from is called Zoo Borne's. And the reason why we selected that particular book is because, in addition to having reading, we've added a couple of partners this year: the Dublin Foundation, the PTO of Daniel Wright Elementary, and the Columbus Zoo. And the Columbus Zoo is going to bring animals to that event. So, we think that it's really going to be an exciting thing for the kids. They're going to get to hear a book read. They're going to get to see zoo animals. They're going to get to hear a message about the importance of literacy and what work the zoo is doing, sort of maintaining species diversity in the world. And I think that it's going to be a very special event, and I'd like you to come on out if you could and have time at that, just to read a little bit. You'd also pass out books to the kids. For many of us, the first and only book they'll have. And you'll have no idea how much that will mean to them. I will follow up with all of you with an email, so you can confirm if you're able to make it. If you come, unlike last year, I will get you a copy of the book yourselves. So, I hope that you'll consider joining us. And as long as I'm up here, I think that there's, there's Heinz. Hi, Heinz, you were there last year. If you could please come again this year, I'll follow up with you as well. We had quite a wonderful event, so I hope that you'll consider joining us this year. And thank you so much for your time.
Excellent.
1:45. If you'd be there at 1:30 probably best. Again, that's Wednesday, April 3rd, at Daniel Wright Elementary. Thank you.
My name is Eric Kraus, and I live at 8606 Kirkville Court. I hope you're able to read the sheets I prepared for your packets, and I realize you do have a lot to read. I'm here tonight to update you on the things I've talked about to you before and also make two requests of City Council at this time. But first, I want to clear up some possible misconceptions about my proposals. I did not start this process with the idea of coming asking for a bouldering wall, climbing structure, obstacle course, anything like that. I got involved with this because for many years I've been using our parks and have found that we are lacking things for families to all use together and adults to use. We have many playground piece of equipment for children that are lacking in other areas, and we have a very low park utilization and frustrate adults. And I've noticed this especially when traveling to other parks, other states, other countries, and seeing that we are lagging in these areas. So, what I've been looking for for a while is what would work for Dublin. And as I told you, I had that aha moment when I saw the climbing wall in the downtown side of Autobahn Park. There, what impressed me the most is that people of all ages, both sexes, were heavily using that structure. They're interacting, helping each other, doing things I just do not see here in the Dublin parks at this time. This is not like the skate park. It's not for a very narrow group of users. It's a very widespread use. And when you've asked me about the cost-effectiveness of these proposals in the past, these are the ones that the cities and communities around the country are finding cost-effective. They have the heaviest usage. So, when you look at dollars spent per people that are using these structures, it is very high and have not gone anything higher at this time. Columbus, unfortunately, is more than three years ahead of us in this area. And admittedly, it's actually the Metro Parks that funded it, but they're working closely with Columbus to provide for the residents they're trying to attract to the downtown area. And also, the obstacle course, even with the hiccups in funding for Metro Parks, they have committed to finishing that this year. And also, when I was down with Ron Whittington, I learned that they're also adding a bouldering area because the climbing wall is so heavily used that it cannot be used for bouldering as they had intended to because of the very success. As they said, they're a victim of their own success. You asked me to speak to PrAC. I did so in December, and all the PrAC members were excited about this proposal. And it's my understanding that they put all three projects onto their list of needs for Dublin. But also, I had that even some Dublin Soccer League adults that were in the audience that night felt they had to speak up and say they cannot wait to see this happen. They were all excited about these ideas. What council needs to understand, these are not future needs. These are current unfulfilled needs of our adults and families in this area. I have done the work and research with the residents, Metro Park staff, others, taken many people down that have been first-time users of the park. The response has always been the same. Wow, why can't we have things like this up here? Even from staff and officials, I've had Marcia, Michelle, Fred, Ron Whittington, Patty Ranella, Chris, Nicole. Fortunately, they were all down in the cold weather, so they didn't exactly get to enjoy it, but they at least got to see what was happening downtown. The officials, only Councilman Reiner is the only one that's thought in warm weather. Fortunate for him. I will not try to speak for them. They can speak for themselves. But it's interesting that when I had Ron Whittington down, he let me know that Ohio has added the climbing structures and things of these natures to the immunity list, such as other playground equipment, in response to so many cities and communities wanting these and already installing these structures. Also, the same time that we learned, right before Ron was down, that City of New York, people were there from the Brooklyn Bridge Park. They're looking at Columbus to try and emulate the success where their Metro Parks can be a long list of cities and communities that have come into investigating or emulating. So, my two requests are, first request tonight is that with regard to the obstacle course, in order to have any chance of getting to the point where a cost estimate can be arrived at for this budget cycle, that is beyond my expertise. So, what I'm asking is for either the staff hours or the money to have somebody that can facilitate, like a landscape architect, get it from the design conceptual phase to where it can be presented to council within this budget year. And if we do not do that now, unfortunately, there'll be no hope of constructing an obstacle course during the year 2014. Again, as I said, Columbus will have one in place this year because they felt it's essential for the residents downtown. My second request involves the bouldering area. If you recall, this was in-
Excuse me, Eric. I'm sorry for the interruption. You keep referring to Columbus.
When I say Columbus, I'm mixing Metro Park slash Columbus because it is technically a Metro Park.
I understand. There is a distinction, though. So, you mentioned Columbus. This is not-
Unfortunately-
Eric, please, if you'll allow me to finish.
Yes.
Okay. Columbus is not funding this, this boulder experience that you just spoke of. It would be the Metro Parks. Am I correct?
That is mostly correct. For instance, the obstacle, it was funded entirely by Metro Parks for the climbing wall that is there. The obstacle course, Rotary Club and others downtown are kicking in money because of the funding setbacks, Metro Parks, but it's being predominantly funded by Metro Parks.
And it'd be on Metro Parks' property, am I right?
Correct. It's on Metro Parks' property, but it's funding hybrid. It's policed by Columbus Police when Metro Parks is closed.
Okay. Well, if you want to wrap up with your second proposal or recommendation, please.
Okay. My second proposal, if you recall, this is what I showed you as a mock-up. I thought maybe a bouldering area, the most doable or implementable of the proposals would be down Kaufman Park and look something like this. After a lot of research, I found it is essential that the first one that might be installed in Dublin to prove its success be installed at the north end of the Avery Park. And the reasons for that are in the packet that I gave you, so I won't go over those now. Also, as far as the look and design of it, it changed quite a bit. I've been working with the company that made, and I've always presented myself just as a resident, but I've been working heavily with them, the company that designed and built the course, the wall downtown. If we could have a second image. This is what we came up-
Eric, we're going to have to wrap up here, okay?
Okay. Well, I'll have to come back another time because, as I said, I put it in your packet, but I have the bits and proposals, and this is something that's actionable and doable right now. And just may relate that size to you as far as the size within here, but for you to consider it. Hopefully, you wrote everything of this in the packet. The information was there. But you've shown great leadership in the past, and I would hope you would do so now. If this is enacted and you approve the funds now, it can be done possibly even in time for the Memorial Tournament, but certainly this summer and way before the President's Cup.
Thank you. Comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I love your passion. And I know you care deeply about Dublin, and you really want us to be a forward-thinking community and competitive with our neighbors. And you're trying to get something done. And I don't think, I don't think in the 14 years or how many years I've been here, I've ever seen one person go through all the research with the kind of dedication you have to try to get something going here. I mean, even going to the, to the level of the insurance program and, you know, the risk management part of this, then going through the analysis of the correct site, you know, how many houses are within possible parks. And I appreciate reading your paper where you've said, okay, you know, my first guess at this was wrong. You know, I've done the math, figured out how many units are here, how many people can really appreciate this. And, you know, you've sort of been a one-man committee, along with Fred and our staff helping you. But, you know, I think you're, you're trying to do something great for our city, and I really appreciate that. And I think, and what I like to do is if you come back at the next meeting to finish your presentation, that, you know, we do consider, once stepping out of the box for something like this. You know, our normal procedure is in August, we sit down and we go through the entire budget, and then this idea, you know, pops up, and then it sort of is under consideration. And it might be slotted in from anywhere from the year 2014 to the year 2025, where none of us will be able to climb your wall or do anything with this. So, I'm just hoping that my colleagues appreciate, I think, the effort you put forward and the idea and how much, you know, this isn't a tennis court. This is going to get a lot, a lot of use, and I can see that. And I can see also in your previous presentations where you've said, the kind of young people we're drawing into our business communities that we want here, that we're trying to staff our office buildings with, are the kind of people that really would appreciate this, plus the families and everybody else. So, I think, I don't in any way ever want to discourage you from your civic activism because, you know, you're, just because of the amount of effort you put in this. I know you've got hundreds of hours in this, and you've met with everybody, and you went, you did everything we've asked you to do. You've gone to CSAC and met with Fred. And so, I'm hoping that maybe the council would consider, if you have a budget for this rocks work, one climbing object sometime, that you, I should have known you'd have it prepared, that you, that we possibly do something different, maybe. And instead of going through the normal procedure, we actually try to implement at least one of these proposals that you're trying to get on the table. And I know you've talked to John O'Meara, and you've been trying to work to make our park better, the one that belongs to Metro, and I appreciate all that. And, you know, I, I sometimes think back, I was just talking to one of the Rotary groups, and in preparing for that speech, I remember looking into some paperwork, and I looked back to the year 2000. And I was invited to go talk to the Metropolitan Club on why Dublin, for 20 years, has surpassed Columbus in all of its activities. So, I was going through the speech, and I went down there and gave a speech in the year 2000 from laws that we wrote in 1980. And we used to bang out legislation in like, one month. It could be, everybody's going to have bicycle trails in their community. We're going to have street trees. We're going to reduce signage. We're going to ban billboards. And we were constantly coming up with really interesting ideas. And so, you know, at that time, I think Columbus finally said, you know, what are those guys doing up there? They're on top of everything, and they're moving really quick. It took them 20 years to invite one of us finally to come down and talk to them at the Metropolitan Club. But, you know, your kind of ideas are the kind of ideas that push us forward, and I appreciate that. So, I just would hope my colleagues would consider, when you come back and finish your next presentation, that we think about maybe going out of the box and maybe supporting something that you're trying to do here. That's my comment.
Merrily.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your continuation of your presentations to us. Marcia, I am curious, though. I think you brings up some really interesting points about the utilization of our parks and sort of the evolution that parks would take now into different kinds of structures and the family-friendly. I was trying to find your right words here, but I can't quickly come up with them. So, I'm wondering if Fred might address the issue of how, you know, he has done his presentation to PrAC and CSAC and all. And how are we using this information now in adding, you know, new ideas and new structures or whatever you want to call them, to our parks so that we are evolving with the times?
Yeah, and we did, after Eric was here last fall sometime, we have taken a look at and agree that a lot of the things that he is proposing are elements that would be of interest in our parks and for our residents. And I know Fred and his staff have been looking at options with regard to bouldering and potential for obstacle courses. We've gone on and looked at things that are out there on YouTube as far as, I think it was, what is it, the fun theory, just different areas. So, we recognize that we need to make sure that we're, we're looking at new things to include in the parks and things that would be of interest to our current residents as well as residents coming up. And so, as part of the, the review on some of the work that Fred and his staff is doing, is figuring out, again, which parks make sense, which parks we have current funding programmed, and is, are they a park that makes sense to make some changes. And so, we're looking at, at some of those options.
Because you're right, we have dedicated some money this year. And, you know, maybe as I assume you're saying that, that money could be redirected to the, to do something like this in the park rather than whatever it was intended to use.
Well, and we'll have to, we'll have to look at that and see how far along we are in the planning, what commitments were made to neighborhoods for some of those parks. So, we are, but we are looking at what, what the options are.
One thing I'd be careful about is the commitment to neighborhoods, which I don't know what they are, so I'm just talking in theoretical terms here, are somewhat based on their level of knowledge of what's available, which might be limited. And so, if they, you know, heard a presentation with other options that they didn't know before, they might say, wow, that would be more interesting. Because one, one thing I know that in the past, we haven't really had a park in a neighborhood for a while, but, you know, when we did have more of them going on, being developed, that neighborhoods often saw them as their own park, where we view that as a park in a system of total parks in our community. Even though I have to say that rarely do you see anybody outside of a neighborhood in a park unless it's like a tennis, you know, tournament or something of that nature. But I would imagine that that might be one of the concerns if it was in a real neighborhood park, as opposed to Kaufman or Avery or Derry Fields or something like that.
And we'll look at some of the developments that we have coming up, and, and we can get some information back to council as to where we are on those, in those parks and what elements that we're currently looking at.
Yeah, you know, Marcia, I'd be interested in finding out, you know, what funds, and I think Mike mentioned this the other day, what funds are available, you know, to do something like this. It's, we don't have one of these. It's interesting. You might end up with two of them or three of them, God knows. But what funds are really available to sort of do this on a, on a shorter time span than what we normally might do, see something pop up that's, you know, very interesting and, you know, very unique and sort of fun. And, you know, I think the term is active adult, is what he used, but I'd really like to see, you know, what funds are available on our different park funds for this kind of thing.
Well, we'll take a look. We'll provide additional information back to council.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Eric, I just want to say that I likewise appreciate your enthusiasm for this particular project. However, I want to hear more from staff. You mentioned a presentation, in fact, as you know, I was at the combined meeting of CSAC and PrAC where you approached me again about this particular project. I don't believe that we've, have we gotten the minutes from that meeting yet?
I thought I read it last time, yeah.
Excuse me? I don't, I don't believe we have. This is from just last week.
Oh, December. That was a different, I was there for a different reason last week.
Okay.
Yeah, because I read it somewhere that he was there.
But I'd like to hear more from CSAC and PrAC. I'd like to hear more, you know, based on Fred's analysis. With all due respect, I'm, I'm not going to have any one single individual. I appreciate the suggestion, but we need a whole lot more information before we're going to decide on a location. Again, you know, for you to suggest that it should be in Avery Park, I appreciate, I, I trust that, you know, that's just your suggestion. That's one person's opinion, you know. But I think we need a whole lot more input and a whole lot more analysis, and analysis from our staff. And that's assuming that, you know, we even go forward, you know, and when it is that, I mean, number one, if we go forward, number two, when we go forward, in my opinion. So, you know, with respect to, you know, where we are relative to Columbus, you, as I pointed out, you keep mentioning Columbus. This is actually a Metro Parks effort, you know. But I, for one, you know, again, I want us to be at the forefront, you know, with respect to recreation. And in fact, I believe we are. I, I think that you mentioned somewhere in this document, you know, you made comments with respect to bicycling. You know, frankly, in my opinion, you know, that's simply the result of us being slow to promote ourselves in that regard. Square mile for square mile, Columbus doesn't compare to the city of Dublin, you know, with respect to recreation, you know, whether it be cycling, you know, whether it be with respect to parks and open space and so forth. So, you know, with respect to this one particular element, it's not even Columbus. It happens to be located in Columbus, but it's actually on land owned by Metro Parks, and it's an, an effort that is, is the initiative of the Metro Park. So, I want us to be, you know, at the forefront in, in the area of recreation in every respect, be it, be it obstacle courses, bouldering, rock climbing, and, and any other outdoor recreation opportunities that may be available to us. So, you know, that's who I want to hear from next. I, I understand your enthusiasm. I'm, I'm pleased that you brought it to us because I think it's something I, I don't know that any of us would have thought of independently, but for you bringing it to us. You know, but I think, for me, I'm only speaking for myself, that I think it's at a level where I need to hear from staff.
I have resources I've developed and have references for. How, where do I then pass this along? Because, as he said, I have done several research. So, how, I've not quite seen or felt, how do I get the bulk of the rest of that to the appropriate people so that if they want to interview, talk to, make contact with, follow up on the research that I've done?
Well, and you can always provide the information to me or through Fred, and we, we can include the information as part of staff updates to City Council.
Okay. May I just answer a question of Merrily, though, for a moment?
Sure.
Michelle Crandall, pardon me. Michelle Crandall gave me a copy of a Wall Street Journal article some months ago, talking about how it's now been recognized that we've had decades of dumbed-down playgrounds and that it's been stunting emotional and physical development of children. And so, exactly along these lines, these proposals are being advanced in other places right there. Originally, I was thinking I've seen low utilization by families and adults. After she put this article through, I've also realized from the experiences where I kept taking people down that have never been to it before, that even at about eight years old, they were saying, so I've taken many grandparents, parents, grandchildren down. They were telling me afterwards that, well, gee, I've grown more today. I was afraid of this, or I was afraid of that, and now I'm not. So, there's a Wall Street Journal article that I gave a copy of to Anne, in case anyone would like to refer to. Or I'm sure, Michelle, you could get the original link to that.
I would like to agree with some of them.
I would like to agree with some of the statements that Tim made as far as programming. Fred's very into programming whenever we say we want a park or whatever, and he maps out the programming that's available or should be appropriate for that park. So, I think Fred, as you said, he's looked at this, he and his staff, and I would like to hear more from staff also about the programming, where it would be appropriate, and what things they would recommend. I think they are looking positively at it, but I would like to hear their feedback also, pretty much the same thing that Tim mentioned.
Okay.
You know, I agree with you, but historically at least, one of the ways that we got feedback, get feedback from staff is by asking them to explore what a citizen might have brought to us. And we didn't ask that before tonight. Now, Marsh is saying to us that they're exploring it.
Yes, we are.
So, we're going to get some feedback back. But we haven't really made a commitment to Eric that we were ever going to ask the staff to kind of do that, which is what historically we do. So, you know, I think now we know that they are doing it, and we're going to get that information.
Yes.
Soon, we hope.
Yeah, we are, we are looking at options, and I know they're evaluating what types of, whether it's the boulders or some type of obstacle course, and where it would make sense to have it. So, we are looking at, at options for different elements within the parks.
You know, two things, Marshall. One thing is the, the fact that the Metro Parks is building this in the center of Columbus. And we supported that levy, and one thing we asked him when he was here asking for that money, John O'Meara, was, are you going to expand our park? And he said, no, but I asked him, are you going to improve the park? And he said, yeah, we'd probably make improvements. Well, the kind of things that Eric is suggesting or the kind of improvements I'd love to see in our park, paid for already, big chunk of it by our taxpayers. So, I would hope, and I think I brought this up before, that somehow we work with him, talk to him. They said they're in a budgetary crunch, but I see them still doing a lot of stuff, and see if they're going to put anything up in our park other than a wind tower, something like this. It's rather expensive and rather interesting and rather fun, and is also a magnet for drawing young people to enjoy that facility. So, you know, I would really like to see that. And then the second item that Eric brought up, and I guess you're alluding to that, and we're now going to look at that with Fred's staff, is, you know, this idea of this exercise course where it's broken down for toddlers, youth, teenagers, middle-aged people and seniors, and it's a series of concentric rings or something where your whole family goes out and everybody goes to the area that's going to be enjoyed by that particular individual at that particular age group. And I would love to see us, and I, I agree with Eric, you know, this is really, I'm a landscape architect, I read these magazines, I see all this stuff happening all over the country, and I'd love to see some of this stuff happen here. So, somehow, our landscape architecture person, Holly, right? Is it Holly?
Laura.
Laura. I'd like to see Laura, you know, maybe start looking at some of this, or Fred, or, you know, try to, you know, get into some of this so we can think about whether this is something that would really be attractive down on the river or, you know, some other site. So, we could be on top of it when that day comes. So, those are the two items I just wanted to bring up.
Mike, Rick, Amy, you've heard of just a couple of us speak a lot on this subject. You folks care to offer an opinion?
Well, I'm not going to try to split the baby because I agree with a lot of things you said, Tim, and I agree with a lot of things John said, and I think Mary Lee kind of summarized in my mind that we're asking staff to look at this, and we do have very much a protocol in place already. So, you know, thank you for coming, and get with these folks, and let's see what exciting things we can come up with. So, you know, I don't know what more to add to that.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to the consent agenda, just one item on this evening's consent agenda, and those would be our minutes, but I am obligated to ask whether any council member wishes to remove that item, sole item from the consent agenda. Hearing no such motion, I would move that we approve the actions for the one item listed on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And if you call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Mrs. Boring.
And Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to the second reading of ordinances, beginning with ordinance 11-13.
Petitioning the county commissioners of Franklin County, Ohio for annexation of approximately 2.232 acres of land located on Cosgrave Road to the city of Dublin.
Thank you. Mr. Hammersmith.
Mayor, members of council, you have before you this evening, three ordinances that allow us to petition the Franklin County Commissioners to annex right-of-way purchased as part of the Cosgrave Shire Rings Roundabout construction. The first, the ordinance, 11-13.
Excuse me, Mr. Hammersmith. Can I just back up? Should we maybe just introduce all three then? I'm sorry about that. I'm sorry for the interruption. You're fine, sir. And if you would read ordinance 12-13 and ordinance 13-13 as well?
Sure. Petitioning the county commissioners of Franklin County, Ohio for annexation of approximately 3.779 acres of land located on Cosgrave and Shire Rings Roads to the city of Dublin. And ordinance 13-13, petitioning county commissioners of Franklin County, Ohio for annexation of approximately 0.258 acres of land located on Cosgrave and Shire Rings Road to the city of Dublin.
Okay. Thank you. Please continue.
Continuing. First ordinance, 11-13, deals with the 2.232 acres along Cosgrave Road. Ordinance 12-13 deals with 3.779 acres along Shire Rings Road to the east of the roundabout. And then lastly, ordinance 13-13 is 0.258 acres on the southwest corner of the intersection. Staff does recommend that we file this petition to annex this right-of-way into the city of Dublin. It will certainly clear up jurisdictional boundaries, provide for the best service of the intersection, and allow us to be reimbursed for the construction of the roundabout by permissive gas tax funds. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none. Ann, if you would call the vote first for ordinance 11-13.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring. Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
And for ordinance 12-13?
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring. Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Thank you. And finally, for ordinance 13-13?
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring. Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Great, thank you.
Moving on with our second readings, ordinance 14-13.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documentation to acquire 0.046 acre more or less permanent multi-use utility, grading and drainage easement, and a 0.007 acre more or less temporary easement from John R. Warrantz.
Thank you, Mr. Hammersmith.
Mayor, members of council, you have before you this evening, another easement acquisition associated with the Dublin Road South, Section 2, shared use path extension. This will be the extension of the path which started last year. This portion will be from Hurtford Lane to Rings Road. And this evening, we have from Mr. Warrantz, a permanent easement as well as a temporary easement for the path. Apologize for the slide being a little dark, but this is the Warrantz property here, and in the yellow being the permanent easement, the blue being the temporary construction easement. You may recall at your last council meeting from the Nesters, which are next door to the north, we also acquired a permanent and temporary construction easement. These are the only two permanent easements needed for this project. There are two other temporary easements which we have secured, and we are ready to move forward with this project and expect to be to you in your first meeting in April for a good acceptance resolution. Staff recommends that we proceed with these, this acquisition, authorizing the city manager to execute the conveyance documents. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I just, oh, sorry.
I was just curious about the vegetation. Did our people do that, or was that an outside appraiser for the cost?
That was from the appraiser. Outside appraiser.
And do our people get involved, our arborists and such?
We review the appraisals.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Saleh?
I was just curious, there's going to have to be a bridge structure over that ravine?
Correct.
And the depth of the ravine? I'm just curious how we're going to protect that from people on the bike path wandering off because of the drop-off.
It's actually going to be a prefabricated structure similar to what we've used elsewhere on our paths, which is constructed of steel and has the side rails along, adjacent to the structure, so that folks don't stray off the structure.
Right, I understand the structure, but I'm talking about the approaches on either side.
The structure will be long enough, and it'll be grading. I mean, it'll be actually up to that point, it'll be relatively flat. So, if there's any concern, I guess afterwards, we can always put up additional rail if we feel it's necessary.
Okay.
But we're going to try and avoid that if at all possible.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Ann, if you call for the vote, please.
Ms. Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring. Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance 15-13?
Enacting new Chapter 37 contracting and competitive bidding of the codified ordinances of the city of Dublin and declaring an emergency.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, this ordinance before you tonight, in essence, allows us to add two, two new tools to our toolbox in how we build projects, one being the design build and one being the construction manager at risk, which are just names that were placed on things that are now permitted under the Ohio revised code. What this does, and just for purposes of example, we've done design build before here, had to pass an individual ordinance when we did it each time. This allows us to put it in our codified ordinances, which we can go out and do a design bid. First of all, what council needs to understand, you will still see all the protocol. You'll, you'll see what we advertised, you know, who, what, who responded, why we picked Josh Mo rather than somebody else. You'll still vote on the appropriation, and you will still authorize Marsh to execute a contract. So, you'll still have all the oversight you have if we use that. The reason we're doing this is because it affords us the opportunity to save some money on engineering, I think mostly, and also to move projects a little bit faster. The example I give is not one related to cities but to schools. You're going to build a project, and instead of bidding out the engineering first as design and then bidding out the contract, you would do one bid where you'd take a proposal from a, I'm just going to pick a name, Rosselli. And he comes back and says, we'll design it, we'll engineer it, and we'll work with you all in one project for this amount of money. So, we're in contract with one person, and we're not going back to the engineer after the construction people get in it and say, no, we have to change this or that. The only other thing that, that I must say, I have to apologize for asking it be an emergency. About three months ago, I had something happen. It's never happened. I practice law, I had a guy walk in my office, works for me, Rod Davison, and say, I'm quitting in two weeks. And I said, you're going to another firm. He said, I'm quitting the practice, done practicing law. And he, you know, ended up in Olbets as the village administrator. So, it put us behind. We wanted to get this to you in January. The reason we have it on as emergency is Paul would like to use this in the Highland Croix project, which there's materials out there now. If, if council does not see it as a real emergency, then we can, you know, the 30 days we can wait. But that's where it got to that point. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Hearing none. Ann, if you call for the vote, please.
Are we going, are we voting on emergency?
I'm so sorry, I don't have the emergency notes in there. Need a motion for emergency. Unless you don't want.
I mean, I have no problem with doing that. I'll, I'll move for emergency.
That's okay. I'll second it.
All right. Ann, if you call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Boring. Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Thank you. And on the ordinance?
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring. Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
a proactive approach to look at our options, evaluate the, the, the various buildings and, and options out there. And certainly there's financial considerations as part of that, but I would like to recognize the partnership that we've had with Dublin over the last sixteen years, particularly in the last ten years, that, that Dublin proactively came to us with the FiberLink opportunity. That was a big deal to us. We, we, we've used that and that's, that's been a very big help to our business. You've worked very well with us in helping us with our building signage. We work hard to promote the CareWorks brand, and again, that's been a very strong brand builder for us and, and we appreciate that very much. Emerald Parkway widening, again, facilitating for our associates. It's, it's something that we see as a very positive thing and gives us a very good feeling moving forward. We've been very fortunate to be recognized as the best place to work this past year, and I think being part of the Dublin community is part of that, so we want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
And likewise, you know, I think the, the three items that you mentioned, the FiberLink and the signage and the widening of Emerald Parkway, you know, are things that I don't want to say is necessarily unique to Dublin, you know, but an example of the kinds of actions that we, as a city and a government, engage in to support businesses, you know, hopefully not only the retention but their expansion, certainly it's been an expansion in your case.
Yes.
I wanted to ask you, well, first of all, the signage, you mentioned the signage, and, you know, I just have to say, you know, maybe not with as much pride as you, but, you know, with pride, I, I drive by, you know, at least twice a day on, on two seventy and, you know, it's a, it's a landmark of sorts and, you know, I, I think we're all very proud, you know, to have your business, you know, within our borders. But if it's not proprietary, could you make a few comments regarding how CareWorks utilizes the FiberLink?
Sure, we, we actually, in, in the past, we outsourced a large portion of our IT world, including our core processing, to a partner. And through the evolution of our business and part of our growth, we determined and, and engaged in a project to in-source that information systems processing over the last, really over the last year and a half. And that fiber, we, we set up an external data site up at, in Shearer's Court, and this allowed us to connect high speed to that data site, which gave us tier four capability and, and greatly facilitated the transition to in-source our own IT world. And the timing of that was, was wonderful, it was proactively done and, and by Dublin approaching us and, and it just worked out great.
Great, glad to hear it, glad to hear it. And I personally had the opportunity to visit your business, I believe, as part of one of our annual business appreciation days, and, and I have to say, your employees do seem very into, I'm, I'm not kidding, certainly they enjoy the event and it's always a lot of fun, but, you know, I just got that vibe.
Appreciate that.
You know, being there, so anyway, congratulations, we're glad to have you.
Tim, I think what might support your statement is that, congratulations, you were named number one best place to work in central Ohio in twenty twelve in the large company category, so that's something that you should be very proud of, as long as Dublin being very proud of.
Thank you very much, we are proud of that.
Great, thank you all. Anne, if you would call for the vote, please.
Can I ask just one quick question?
Sure.
They have the same amount of fiber they had last, last go around, there's no change?
Right, it's just a renewal.
Thank you, that's all.
Anne, if you call for the vote, please.
Yes, Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan. Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Ms. Genisi Zirker. Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Luckleider.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And, Colleen, thank you, you know, certainly pass along to the rest of your staff, and thank you, Dana, appreciate all your efforts. Moving to that phase of our meeting where we have first reading of ordinances, ordinance seventeen dash thirteen.
Authorizing appropriation of a zero point one five five acre more or less storm sewer easement at seventy-four sixty Dublin Road from Matthew C. Wickline.
I'll introduce him.
Thank you. Mr. Hammer Smith.
Mayor, members of council, you have before you this evening a first reading of a storm sewer easement from Mr. Matthew Wickline located at seventy-four sixty-three Dublin Road. As you look at the slide, Mr. Wickline's property is along the west side of Dublin Road, north of Bran Road, and we're securing a three hundred and forty foot by twenty foot easement from Mr. Wickline in order to allow us to install a fifteen inch storm sewer to provide better outfalls of a storm sewer system within Sheffield Place. This has been a longstanding resident concern of those located in Sheffield Place, and particularly those folks located along the east side of the subdivision. We, over the past several years, have attempted to work with Mr. Wickline. This was an improvement that actually was identified in our nineteen ninety-nine storm sewer or stormwater master plan, and we've been working for, really since then, to implement this, but really in the last several years have had serious discussions with Mr. Wickline. I talked to him as recent as just a little over a week ago. We continue to try and negotiate with Mr. Wickline, but have not yet been successful in reaching agreement, so as a result, we, staff is recommending that we take this first action of appropriating the easement, and we'll be back with you March eleventh for the second reading of this ordinance.
Great. Any questions? Okay, we'll have the second reading at the March eleventh council meeting as Mr. Hammer Smith indicated, thank you. Moving on then to ordinance eighteen dash thirteen.
Amending sections thirty-two point sixty through thirty-two sixty-one, repealing sections thirty-two point seventy through thirty-two point seventy-eight of the codified ordinances of the City of Dublin, combining the duties and functions of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission and the Community Services Advisory Commission into a newly configured Community Services Advisory Commission.
I'll introduce him.
Thank you.
Ms. Crandall.
Good evening, members of council. This, this ordinance would combine the Community Service Advisory Commission and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission into a newly formed Community Service Advisory Commission. It does retain the existing duties and functions of each, and it also adds a function related to reviewing and making recommendations related to bicycling initiatives within the community. We were able to bring both of these commissions together last Wednesday evening. Mayor Luckleider was there to talk with them about the reasons that we'd like to move forward with this and to get input from the commission members, and there was a strong sense of understanding of, of, over the past few years, it's been more difficult to bring assignments to these two commissions, and there was strong support of both of those commissions to move forward with combining them. I can answer any questions that you may have related to this.
I, I would just add that, echo, I guess, what Michelle has said with respect to the sentiment expressed by the people that were there, I thought there was good, you know, discussion and good questions and, and so forth. You know, I think that there was, well, there were two individuals, you know, I think, either whether it was in this memo or in emails, you know, since then, whose first term would expire. Ned McCoy's term limited, if you will, so he wouldn't be eligible for reappointment, but there were two other individuals who, if not for the initial proposal, would be interested in continuing to serve, so, you know, we talked about the idea of allowing them to be reappointed, you know, whether it's for a year, two years, three years, but that over time, present members would be term limited off, and over the next two or three years, the size of the combined commissions would shrink to maybe nine or ten members. And, and again, I think that there was an understanding of the present members, you know, of why we would go in that, in that direction, but I don't know that it's, that anyone knows what the ideal number is, you know, total commission members of the combined commissions, so you might want to give that some consideration.
Right, this first year, we have two members that could, are eligible for another term, and if both of them were interested and council approved that, we would have thirteen members for the first year, most likely ten or less the next year, based on people being term limited out of the commission.
The other question that I had was with respect to, if I'm not mistaken, we traditionally have had a, a senior member, I don't know if that's an appropriate term, a senior appointee from Prac? Is that?
There are a number, aren't, don't we usually have, like, we try to get different segments of the community represented and one happens to be seniors? I don't know if it's a formal.
I don't think it's called out within the ordinance, but I think that's traditionally been something that councils looked for.
And, and one of the, one of the two individuals who, whose first term was expiring was that, that, that senior representative, so-called senior representative, Mel. So he would be going off, otherwise, you know, unless he was reappointed. And, and as you all know, in recent years, the, the, the different commissions have expanded, you know, as we've appointed more than the, you know, traditional seven and truncheon and so forth, so.
I thought, Amy, we had defined desired segments of the population demographically also, I thought that was somewhere, Dana, you might remember that because you were working on it.
It's one of those, I think strive to have representation from these segments.
We do have that in there. Not, we've always have, had some difficulty with that because of the applications that were interested. Also, if you remember, there was a couple of years ago that we tried to, because of the applicants that we had, we tried to expand the commissions and it did not seem to bode well in the long term, so I'm sure we'll discuss that at a later meeting.
I had a question, I'm glad you clarified, about automatically appointing people, because I wondered, for people who, whose term might be up naturally, even if they had the opportunity for reappointment, would we not apply our same criteria, though, looking at their attendance and things of this nature, rather than an automatic appointment? Because that has been an issue on both of these commissions, and I, for one, couldn't support just an automatic thing without, you know, following our regular procedures on that.
And the thought would be for council to be able to review that information, and then when we reappoint the other boards and commission members, most likely at the March twenty-fifth council meeting, this ordinance come through reappointing those that you chose to be reappointed to this commission.
Right. And then I had a question about the bicycling. Why was that not just added in the, on three A, you know, section three A? We, we have a list of things that it does, why is bicycling not just there? Why is it separated?
We could have added it into that section, we wanted to call it out separately. Part of becoming bicycle-friendly community, they look for a commission that's been designated to look at bicycle initiatives, so we wanted it to be its own separate line.
John?
Speaking of that, now that we've lost the person who used to head up our, our attempt for bicycle sanctioning, who is going to head that up for the staff right now?
That'll be Mimi Migliore, who's our nature education coordinator, she's taken on some of Jamie's former assignments, and one of them is to look at our bicycle-friendly community application, and as we head towards the next application process, seeing what we can do.
When is that next process, is it twice a year?
I don't know, I'll have to check and get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Then we will have the second reading at March eleventh.
Thank you.
Thanks. We are now to the other portion of our agenda, the beautify your neighborhood grant recommendations.
The Community Development Committee met on February eleventh, and this time around, we only received three applicants, Post Preserve was one of them, the Woods of Indian Run and the Locksey Condo Association, all of them met the criteria, and we had two or three of them exceeded the matching amounts, which was very laudable for their upgrades, and one was the exact same amount. The committee recommendation was that all of them be approved, and they were, the three of them were underneath our general total budget for community improvements.
Thank you. You have anything to add, Charlotte?
No, I don't. If anyone has any questions about any of the specific applications, I'd be happy to answer those.
The packet was pretty self-explanatory, that they looked like they all did a good job and they're worthwhile projects.
Yeah, I would agree, I just had one question in terms of, related to Post Preserve. It, it appears, and I did have a discussion with Marion about this, that the landscape plan for the entrance was never followed through on by the developer. And so now, of course, the homeowners association ends up being responsible for all of this. So I was curious as to, what is, what do we do as a city to hold developers accountable to complete landscape plans before, you know, they walk away and turn over everything?
Yeah, typically, we do go out and do inspections to make sure that they comply. In this case, I don't know, we'll have to go back and look to see if that's something that didn't get completed, or it did, and the developer just didn't install and we didn't go back and inspect, so we'll have to follow up on that.
It's a lot of money now for the individual homeowners, you know, to have to do when the developer actually built that into the cost of the homes and then never completed it.
Don't they have a bond in place when they do a subdivision development for streets and other improvements? Then you could call on the bond.
Well, I would imagine at this point in time, it's probably expired, but we can see what we can follow up.
In the future, though, and, and the language that you put together for the, for the developer, that it should include those kinds very specifically, I think it probably already does, but if you're, if you're specific, you should be able to call on the bond then, and that'll get, that'll get their attention in a hurry.
We discussed that at the meeting, in fact, and we were told that it was a reserve area maintained by the homeowners association because we had the exact same concerns that you had brought up, so.
It was not a reserve area.
Well, that's what we were told.
Yeah, the, the question came up that on maintenance of the area, was it a park or, no, what, what was the exact designation, and then this was a reserve that's owned by the city but maintained by the association.
That's different then, whether they, the homeowner ever complete, the home, the builder ever actually put in place.
Yes, it was a little bit, little bit different.
Now the ten thousand dollars worth of material that the homeowners association is having to pay for, that's a different issue about reserve.
Well, again, this matter was brought up at the committee meeting. We had concerns why we are, we're now asking the homeowners to invest this amount, and why wasn't it pushed more that the developer do it, and in the future, we need to be very conscious of that also.
I agree.
I'd like to recognize the efforts of the three homeowners associations sharing their respective applications, I mean, they're quite detailed and a lot of work and, and so forth, and, you know, all the people that contributed to that. Should be recognized. Charlotte, with respect to the Post Preserve project proposal, is, is, is that land in question that is being approved? Who owns that land? Is that city-owned land, or, let's answer that question first.
I believe it's, it's city-owned land, from what I understand, it's city-owned land, but like I said, it's, it's a reserve, it's a reserve, so it is maintained by the association.
Well, I, in, in, in reading the minutes, I'd just like to comment, Ms. Saleh made a comment in here, and, and, you know, this was the public position that she took, you know, when we initially did this. I don't recall what my, whether I publicly echoed the sentiment that she expressed here, you know, but I think it's interesting, you know, that we have city-owned land that a homeowners association is responsible for maintaining. You know, certainly that's not consistent without the community, excuse me, throughout the community, I mean, I, I'll use, you know, my neighborhood, which maybe I shouldn't, as an example. You know, we're not forced and funded in Wyndham Village, we have, I don't know whether it's comparable in terms of acreage, it might be close, we have one fairly significant pond, but all that area is maintained by the city at the city's expense. Here in the case of Post Preserve, however, you know, the expense and, and the improvements, we're not forced and funded, which, you know, that, you know, there are other issues with that, which you've heard me speak about before, you know, which is, it's not likely that Wyndham Village is ever going to be eligible for one of these grants, you know, because we don't have the funds to support it, because we don't have the means of collecting those funds. So, you know, and, and, you know, we're, we're not entirely unique, you know, because there are some neighborhoods like ours that are in a similar situation, you know, but, you know, philosophically, it, to me, you know, if somebody moves into a particular community, you know, let's use Muirfield as an example, you know, they, they understand, you know, that there's going to be a fee associated with that, you know, but elsewhere within the community, you know, when you move into a neighborhood like this, and, you know, the homeowners, I mean, it, it, you know, sort of strikes me as double taxation, you know, in a sense, you know, and now their homeowners association fees have to go towards maintaining what is otherwise city-owned property, where that's not a consistent, consistent application across the community.
Yeah, we, we do have in, in several areas where the land was identified, or the reserve was identified as city-owned to be maintained by the homeowners association, and we have it where it's, the reserves are in the name of the homeowners association and maintained by the homeowners association, so we haven't been consistent in every area as the city developed, but we do have other instances where it is city-owned land that's part of the plat and it was dedicated, or it was on the plat dedicated that they be maintained by the homeowners association.
And it occurs to me, I think I know the answer to this question, unrelated, I think, to beautification, but a question of liability. I assume, you know, if there was some incident on this property, it would be, the city would bear liability?
I think that our immunities would, would protect us from the standpoint, as long as we.
Would, but, you know, hopefully the homeowners association, in spite of the fact that, you know, they're having to fund the maintenance and improvement of these areas, but wouldn't bear any liability.
We, we carry liability insurance.
Excuse me?
Our homeowners association, I believe, carries liability insurance, and I also remember Wellington Place, when they came in, that they mentioned they had to carry liability insurance.
But I'm assuming that's for property that the homeowners association owns, it's in their name.
It's a reserve that city.
Really doesn't matter, if they get sued, it's going to defend them, so at the end of the day, you can sue anybody.
Sure.
So, but, yeah, most of the associations do have some kind of coverage, and primarily for the directors and officers' liability, but the rest of it just kind of goes along with it, so it's there.
Tim, you, you bring up a good point. I recall when I was on planning zoning some years ago, that, I don't know if it was Fred that brought this up, but somebody from staff did, that in an effort to curb some costs, but I thought also it was part of the development text, that this land would be maintained by the homeowners association, and it seemed like it was a pretty big effort at that time.
Oh, yeah, I think, you know, that's been the trend, you know, certainly after a particular point in time.
So the homeowners associations are put on notice way before anybody moves in.
You know, I, I wondered about, I, I think we probably do want to figure out a consistent application of this for going forward at least, although we won't have as many developments, I suppose, as we have had, because we don't have as much land available to build, but I wondered, and I had written a note to myself about, I hadn't thought about it in this context that you're bringing up, Tim, but the percent, you know, we say the maximum is five thousand dollars. Well, five thousand dollars against the one is fifty percent of what they're doing, but it's not in case of, like, the one we're talking about, it's only thirty percent of what they're doing, and I know in Camden Lakes, it was really insignificant, I mean, it was important to them, but it was, you know, they did a huge project. So I, I'm wondering if that might not even be taken into consideration in the future, that we, this percent issue against what the total project is, and maybe a criteria, I hadn't, like I say, thought about this, but if it is really owned by the city, but maintained by the association, then maybe we give a higher percent against the cost of what they're trying to do, since we really own the property. I, like I say, I hadn't thought that through, and I still haven't thought it through, but I'm just throwing it out there as something for consideration.
Well, when you have staff maybe look at that and come back to us, that's, I think it's a good idea, and they certainly know the numbers and can illuminate the topic.
And the other thing, one of the, years ago, too, we also looked at the issue of having it in the it in the city's name, there was, there were also issues with property taxes, and it made it much simpler. We took care of filing all the applications that was in our name, and so that was, that was another element that we looked at with regard to these different reserves.
I just have a sense of irony here. We have city-owned land that was never properly seen to by the developer, and now the homeowners' association is coming back to the city to get money to maintain land that we own.
At least they're getting some of their tax off.
It's going to be a great, it's going to be a great project, so I guess we'll go with that, but.
But will you check on the rezoning and the tax to see if we even did require the developer?
Yeah, we'll take a look and see, and if the, you know-
See what the history is.
Depending upon, we'll even contact the developer, if there were things that they didn't do, we'll see what avenues we can pursue at this point.
Okay, because it's a pretty significant amount of land, and it's in a pretty significant viewpoint area.
Location.
Yes.
Well, thank you all, and thanks to staff for your work with these applicants and so forth. Appreciate your efforts. Would a committee member like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Approve the recommendations of-
Remove the recommendations of the community development committee to approve the three grants as they were asked.
Thank you. Ann, if you call for the vote, please.
Ms. Genesis Zoker, Mrs. Borheim.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
I'm going to abstain, because one of my people helped them with their sign and helped them pick out plants, but I did have a chance to ask the applicant this time, how were you treated by the city? And they said, Charlotte had done a fantastic job. She's so considerate, so patient, because they don't know what they're doing, and to work their way through all that paperwork. It's a mountain of paperwork for not a lot of money, so thank you, and I'm staying.
Happy to do it.
Mayor Luckleyter?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salee?
I would also, I thought I'd wait till after the vote. Appreciate your efforts. It was very obvious during the meeting that you put together a very qualified team, and for any association that wants to come in, they are welcome, and you will aid them in any way possible. And I think that's been a very positive thing for these associations. And you also recommend plants that will last longer, maybe something they haven't considered, so you all did a fine job. Thank you for your efforts.
You're welcome, and I'll communicate that to the rest of the team, because they really do work very hard to make sure that these proposals are submitted to you that are, that are good, that you will appreciate, so thank you.
Thank you. Staff comments?
One item, the, in our items of interest, the first, the first item related to the joint economic development district informational meeting that they're having in, with regard to the Union County Economic Development Director up at Marysville at the wastewater treatment facility on March 6th at 5:30, and so if anybody from council wants to attend, there are several of us at staff that will be attending. They had a similar meeting last July, August timeframe that several of us went, but if there's any council member that is interested in going, let us know, and we'll make sure your name gets added to the list.
That's when we have boards and commission interviews. That night.
Is that the same night?
I believe, there was some conflict, I know. I couldn't remember if it was that or-
Right, that's what it is, yeah.
Mike, didn't you go last time?
Well, I think, I don't, I don't believe I was in town. I'm not in town this time either. Spring break for my daughter, so I'm out of town.
I thought that there was some event that was up at the water treatment facility that you would attend.
Well, I know, Mike, we talked about having Mike attend, but I think Mary Lee did attend.
Oh, okay.
So if there is any council that can make it, let us know, and we'll take care of getting you on the list. If not, several of us on staff will be there. And then also, one item for the state of the city on March 14th, Wendy's has offered to provide a tour before the reception at 5:45. If anybody from council is interested, let us know, or let Ann know, and so we can coordinate with Wendy's on that.
Ann, you want to send out a reminder to everybody? Thanks.
And that's it.
That was it?
That's it.
Right, thank you. Mike, you want to start roundtable, please?
Just a couple of things that were in the packet. I was glad to see that the 33 Emerald Parkway artwork piece is moving along, and I know there's a processor will be, will be refining or defining the process soon, so thanks to everybody for working on that. That's finally getting ready to kick off. And then I was pleasantly surprised to see the historic marker replacement update. It looks like there's several options, and so I'll be interested to see how that, how that moves along. I guess if I had my druthers, I would think it should probably go to ARB, since they're vested in that, in the district there, as far as suggest, I don't know if you read the packet, but there's a whole process and-
I was just going to say, since you, since you raised it, Mike, you know, council members, because there are a couple of options, and it appears as though, you know, staff's looking for our direction. Am I right?
That's correct.
Were you looking for it tonight, or at a future time?
Anytime, I, I mean, tonight would be fine. We are doing an update with ARB at their meeting, and I think it's this week, just to let them know that council's direction was to start looking at this. So, yeah, any, sooner the better, I guess.
There was a, there was discussion at the bottom of that about the fact we've got so much going on down there, does it make sense to make those changes now, or should we wait a little bit as we have activity, you know, in that whole district? I mean, I don't know, but I'd be interested to hear their feedback, and really staff's feedback on that issue.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, we, part of our conversation was, it may make some sense to, we can start introducing this and getting some feedback from ARB, but as far as a decision to be made, we may want to wait and see what happens in the next few months with regard to the Bridge Street District and what may be happening in that area.
I think that's wise, too. I'm all for that.
Yeah, and the, the other thing was the architecture of the monuments. I mean, we've got everything in this packet from huge overhead signs to the entryway to pylons, so until they sort through some of this, I think-
Yeah, that's what ARB can start working on, kind of come up with some ideas and kind of bounce that stuff around and maybe make some recommendations.
I don't feel good about it until we sort of see where they're at.
Right, okay.
How many markers do we have?
I believe there are four.
My only concern, well, one, I, I agree with you in terms of, the first choice was ARB, and I, you know, I had written down that that would be my choice, but I do feel that we want to keep it moving. We don't want this now to be, well, we're still not ready, and we still don't know what we're doing, and two years from now, we're still sitting here. So that would be my only issue, is to make sure we move it along and not wait till every project is done.
Oh, yeah, we don't-
We only have four markers, so it's not like-
I was going to say the same thing, Mary Lee. I don't think they need to make a career out of this, so to speak, so.
Good. Sounds like we got a direction.
So is the consensus with respect to ARB?
Yeah.
That's our direction? Yes, sir?
And then I've got one final item, and I just was curious with respect to the Fourth of July, whether we've identified what kind of performers we're going to have, and we're getting late in the game. I've always heard that needs to be pretty far out, and I think council have given pretty clear direction that we'd like to know about it, and maybe have some input this, this time around.
Well, based upon council's feedback and the budget hearing, and the increase in the budget, and the, the direction to hire an agent to start working on our behalf, we have been doing that and are in the process of working with that agent to identify several acts that we could, could use for the Fourth of July. So now, a lot of it has to do with matching up schedules and budgets, and finding out who are the acts that are available.
Marcia, do you anticipate by virtue of the fact that we have engaged an agent, that's going to delay or add more time to the process?
I don't believe so. No, I don't, I don't think it will have a negative impact at all, and I don't know if we have a timeframe yet as to when we'll make the selection.
Let's hear if there is. I'm interested to hear if there's a timeframe. And I would wonder if there's, you know, we're going to have a couple choices, or one choice, or?
We actually do have an offer out right now to enact. We put it in last Thursday. We're hoping to hear within the next week or so. We know that they're booked in the region that same week, so we think that there's a good chance that that will, and it is one of the ones that were of interest.
Yeah. All right.
Is that all, Mike? Rick?
That was the whole. I mean, I don't see the other bit.
Okay, great, thank you. Kathy?
The one thing that- Tim and I had gone to the open house at the deck, and just a very vibrant place. I want to congratulate the staff on making the move. It's a wonderful place. It's more vibrant. The atmosphere was electric. It looks like a little community in there. People are out talking to each other, sharing things, and it was something that, for me, the other place was just kind of there, but this is in the middle of Dublin, and the people who are locating there are as excited as we are, which is a good combination, a good partnership. So for staff getting that place together and going, thank you very much. It was a great reception. Open house. That's it, thank you.
Mary Lee?
I had a follow-up question on the memo on the AEP line clearing and tree trimming. Just out of curiosity, there's trees that they're going to be, you know, trimming that are in the right of way, and yet, part of it said, I think part of it indicated that the homeowner had put, you know, planted them in the right of way. So I'm trying to understand, like, do we make it clear to homeowners what the right of way is, and that they shouldn't be putting trees in this right of way, or?
Well, it's part of the information on their plat and on their deeds, it identifies where the rights of way, where the easements are, and, you know, they don't come in and get permission from us to plant trees in those areas. I mean, if they were to come in, we would be able to help them identify that there is an easement there, and some of those could be older areas, I'm not sure, but it is on their, their deed in the plat.
So when it says that we're going to work with the homeowner to see about the relocation of trees, I'm assuming we're not, I guess I'm trying to balance between those who chose to plant their tree in the right of way, and those who did not, and, you know, and so they, they still may need cutting, but.
Right, and AEP's been doing a good job of trying to work with the residents, and it's, several years back, we started the program, the right tree in the right place, starting to help people identify and be aware of the fact that they need to look at their deeds so that they know where and where they can't do things, including planting trees and building structures on their lot. So, I mean, AEP's trying to work with the property owners so that if there are issues, there are trees that can get replaced that are somewhere in the area, just not in the easement.
And who's paying for the relocation of trees?
AEP would do that. Or they would work with the homeowner based, and work out some arrangement.
Yeah. And then my other follow-up question was on the utility extension policy. It says that you're going to still be continuing inspections through May. When will the final report finally come to city council?
Part of what we're looking at is this information, as well as we're still involved in our litigation case that we started several years ago. We are also working at staff level of getting much more detailed information with regard to the areas that are unserved, and looking at and matching those up with not only capital projects that the cities, city is doing, but also areas that relate to whether it's residential, commercial, and trying to get a better sense of the priority on those areas. So we anticipate having the additional information, it would be early summer.
Okay, because, you know, we continue to get questions on that, and I think some of us thought we were going to really be doing something earlier in the year on this, so I hope we can stick to not waiting till after our break to have that report. And then I just wanted to say that last month, or two months ago, when I was out of town, I remembered halfway through the night that, that council meeting is streamed, so I turned it on my iPad, and one thing that, it was really excellent to actually see it that way. It's very clear, it's, the color's really good, and you can really hear people, you know, articulating whatever their speech is that they're giving. And the conclusion, of course, fortunately, I only saw the last hour, but I really would just need to say, and I've said it to Steve and Stephen, you know, I'm, I know before I came on council, this soccer issue was the same, it's, some of the people are even the same. The stories are still the same. The relationships are still the same, and the problem relationships. I don't know what other cities do to manage soccer programs, but I, for one, would like to know of other kinds of models, because it really isn't fair for not only us to go through this all the time, but for our staff to go through it, and the parents of children to go through it, and all this misinformation with all these emails we've been getting now, you know, five more today, and it, really, it's, it's very, you know, I just think it's disingenuous for parents to act like they're five instead of acting like they're responsible for what is supposed, my understanding was that this is a recreation program, and your kid is there to play, and to learn a little bit about the sport, but to have a good time. And it's, it's just way too political for me for what the city ought to be engaged in.
Agreed, but we wanted to make sure you were here for the debate.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
I'll be screaming that meeting, too. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
The, as the liaison of the Dublin Arts Council, and I, and I hope we got this right, and just that Mike mentioned it, and the art project for the bridge, they've talked to ODOT, and they were thinking about, at first, sort of like beautiful tiles that interlocking Celtic knot work, but it turns out that the city, or the state said, you know, they're worried about the tiles falling off. So they went to Plan B, and, you know, God knows if the artist is really going to come back, but I guess the bottom line of this art project is that when you pass underneath 161, you know that this is Dublin. I don't know if it says Dublin, or the rest of the artwork says Dublin to the visitor, but, I mean, that's, was one of the key things to have happen on this art project. So the most visible approach to this is, of course, 161 and not going over the bridge, and I think that's all been decided and put to bed, and so we're now down to, we really want this to be something that we're proud of, it's artistic, and yet, the passerby will know that it's a Dublin product.
You know, there is precedent out on the east side where it says east, and I read that ODOT really doesn't like names, but they can provide a waiver, so it wouldn't be the first time it's ever been done.
Yeah, and they're asking for a waiver, so we'll see what comes up, but that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thanks. Amy?
I just have a couple of things. It's been mentioned earlier in the meeting, we have board and commission interviews March 6th at 6:00 PM here, and then additionally, Ann pointed out that the board and commission recognition program is going to be held the evening of Wednesday, April 10th, if everybody could get that on their calendar. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. This Wednesday, a few of us will be meeting with leadership Dublin at the Rec Center. That's at 5:30, just a reminder. And then another reminder regarding our joint work session with the Planning and Zoning Commission to take place, that'll be a week from this evening, Monday, March 4th. That begins at 6:30. Where is that occurring?
It's here.
Right in here. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Thank you.